him in that organization. Why, he is also going to have what, big brother attitude? Biggest country in the world. Fine, so right now few countries like France and Germany, they are dominating European Union. But once the entry of Russia, do you think that they are able to present their dominance? No, but at the same time, you cannot say no to that Russia. Why, then Russian will put blame on you. Ki, I want what, peace, I want welfare, I want more trade and commerce, I want to establish no war zone, but you people are rejecting my idea. Of what? Of having greater cooperation. So don't blame me. And this is why Donald Trump also asked whom? Xi Jinping to be the part of what oath-taking ceremony on twentieth of January when he is going to assume what? Presidency of US. So what Donald Trump says that, Donald Trump said that, he come, you are invited. If Xi Jinping will go, people will say that Xi Jinping is what? Weak leader, he do not have a capacity and he is under the pressure of whom? US and Donald Trump is what, great leader, he put what, China under the pressure. And if he will not go, then Trump will blame him. Ki, we want to try to have what, good relation, but you are denying. To sometimes you are going to have what, strategic dilemma. Ki, go or no go? Fine, same strategic dilemma was happened with Pakistan back in two thousand fourteen, when Modi ji become Prime Minister first time. He invited all the S R countries. Nawar Sharif was in dilemma. Ki jayen ki nahi jayen? Should go or not go? And he thought that ki maybe it is a good initiative to what? To start a good relationship with whom? India, he went there and Modi ji also went to Pakistan, why Afghanistan? Fine, but one incident have completely changed what? Dynamics. So strategic cooperation, strategic dilemma are two main state when we are having serving our what? National interest. And in that context of what? Regional organizations, we are also facing what? Strategic dilemma and strategic cooperation. Understood? So these are the three dimensions of what, three dimensions of any regional organization. So I have given you the framework. Ki, what framework needed to understand the nature, function, objective, challenges and way forward for any organization? Any organization, any organization, if you keep in your mind, any organization, go to internet or go to your syllabus, take any organization, read about them and with this framework, you are able to identify what challenges they are facing and how to solve those challenges and what are the possibilities with that organization? So which one have a better future, BIMSTEC or SARK? BIMSTEC. Fine, BIMSTEC. India have better opportunity with EU or ASEAN? Why one, take both? Why one only? India have better prospect with both organizations. But in the longer run, which one is more important? ASEAN or EU? It is ASEAN, why? Greater cooperation with ASEAN countries, first of all, they are neighbors. And in international relations, in foreign policy, in national interest, neighbors comes first. All of the foreign secretaries of India, all foreign secretaries of India, before becoming a foreign secretary, they must have served certain countries and especially what, China and Pakistan. So China and Pakistan serving is a kind of what, a precondition to become what? Foreign secretary. Why, because these countries are neighbor and they are typical neighbor. Neighbor means what? Neighbor means what? You have did something in your home and they are invited. Suppose that you have constructed newly constructed house and certain neighbors you have invited. Very nice, very nice, I understand. Why he did that and why I was not able to do that? So jealousy is there, cooperation is there, conflict is there. So every aspect of two countries are there, then they are called what? Typical neighbor. Nepal is a neighbor, China is also neighbor, Bhutan is also neighbor. Fine, but Bhutan we take always granted. Twenty-sixth January, Republic Day parade happens everywhere and see who is invited most of the time? Who is invited most of the time? Bhutan king, why? If you are planning to ask someone to come and come and you are not able to finalize, then ask, arre, tumi aja yaar, come. So you invited whom? Bhutan, nai to Nepal, either Bhutan, Nepal, Sri Lanka. Fine, to Bhutan, Nepal, Sri Lanka, you will see that in the list of invitee on Republic Day parade. You will find most of the time what? So they are neighbors, but they are not typical neighbors. China is a typical neighbor. Ask Xi Jinping to come on twenty-sixth of January Republic Day parade. It is going to be almost impossible or not? Why, Galwan clash nineteen sixty-two war, how, how the Indian army people are going to salute Chinese president? Musharraf came to India and Indian Army General said that ki no, I am not going to give a what? Honor the salute, I am not going to give. If he is the head of the state, it's fine. But before becoming the head of the state, he was a perpetrator of what? Kargil war. And I fought the Kargil war and I am not going to what? I am not going to salute him. Then deliberately that occasion was what? Eliminated. So sometimes what, sometimes socio-cultural, emotional, personal aspects also play an important role in what? Regional organization. So three are main dimensions, but in the supplement, you can mention what? Socio-cultural aspects also. You can also mention what? Socio-cultural aspect. Understood? Have you clarity? Write it down. Write it down. Give a heading. Give a heading. Regional organizations. Give a heading, regional organizations. Right? And it is common for all the organizations, okay? Right? Regionalism, regionalism refers to an attempt. Regionalism is an attempt. Regionalism refers to an attempt by countries. Countries in geopolitical in the region. What you have written? Geopolitical as well as greater cooperation. Greater cooperation in the areas of economic, political, strategic and socio-cultural interaction. Socio-cultural interaction. In the next line. Regional organizations, regional organizations can emerge with put a dash and then write, regional organizations can emerge, put a dash and then write, with with conditions, with conditions, conditions in the inverted comma. Conditions, put in the inverted comma. With conditions and/or and/or through a process and/or through a process. Put the process in inverted comma. And underline these two words, process as well as what? Conditions. Fine. Now in the next line, write conditions conditions in the realm of ideas and sentiments. Conditions in the realm of ideas and sentiment. When countries belongs to a region, when countries belongs to a region shares, shares a sense of, shares a sense of affinity. A double F I N I T Y, affinity. And belongingness belongingness on the basis of on the basis of such shared attributes. Shared attributes. For example, colonial past. For example, colonial past. Comma, economic underdevelopment. Economic underdevelopment. Geographical comma geographical continuity. Geographical continuity. C O N T I G U I T Y, geographical continuity. And cultural similarities. Cultural similarities. In the next line, write, whereas whereas regionalism as a process. Whereas regionalism as a process. When certain efforts certain efforts in the region, certain efforts in the region are driven driven at tapping, at tapping and consolidating, tapping and consolidating consolidating the latent, consolidating the latent, L A T E N T, latent affinities. Affinities, A double F I N I T I E S, affinities among the members. Among the members to future their common interest through close cooperation and integration. Close cooperation and integration. For example, organizations like OPEC. Organizations like OPEC is a part of process. Part of process. Whereas organizations like ASEAN organizations like ASEAN comma NATO. ASEAN, NATO are example of conditions. Are example of conditions. Whereas whereas organizations like EU, organizations like EU are example of, are example of both. Are example of both. Condition as well as process. Fine, now just give a heading. Historical underpinning, historical underpinning of regionalism. Historical underpinning of regionalism. Historical underpinning of regionalism. Right, David Mittrani. David Mittrani, M I T R A N Y. David Mittrani, in his book, A Working, A Working Peace System, A Working Peace System which was published, which was published in nineteen forty-three. Which was published in nineteen forty-three. Proposed cooperation. Proposed cooperation in technical areas in technical areas of interdependence. Technical areas of interdependence. Underline it, technical areas of interdependence. Underline it, then write in the bracket. He calls them, he calls them functional area. He calls them functional area. Bracket close. So as to encourage, so as to encourage greater interaction and closer relation. Greater interaction and closer relation. Among the member states. Among the member state. Full stop, write further, such interactions among the member states, full stop, and write further, such interactions would eventually such interactions would eventually result in habit of in habit of cooperation and deeper understanding. Cooperation and deeper understanding among participating states. Participating states. Which will leads to, which will leads to a system of, which will leads to system of interdependence, which will leads to system of interdependence and linkages. Interdependence and linkages with other areas as well. With other areas as well. And gradually and gradually this linkage, this linkage and gradually this linkage and this linkage and interdependence will leads to, will lead to, will lead to other areas. It is known as, it is known as spill-over effect. S P I double L O V E R, spill-over effect. This functional and spill-over effect. This functional and spill-over effect. Uh, this functionalism, this functionalism, this functionalism and spill-over effect will lead to greater cooperation. Greater cooperation and resolving of a conflict. Resolving of a conflict which are regional in the nature. Which are regional in the nature. And overall, and overall this regionalism approach will bring, overall, this regionalism approach will bring greater economic prosperity. Greater economic prosperity. Better socio-cultural interaction. And most importantly, and most importantly, it will prevent the greatest man-made disaster. Greatest man-made disaster. The war. Greatest man-made disaster, the war. Fine, so we have understood the framework. Fine, now write further in the next line, write scholars, scholars like Berthold, B E R, Bertold, sorry, B E R T H O L D, Bertold, B E R T H O L D, Bertold Rittberg, R I double T, R I double T, B E R G E R. Has given the idea of, has given the idea of pooled sovereignty. Have given the idea of pooled sovereignty. For strengthening, for strengthening the idea of regional organization. Regional organization. According to him, if countries, if countries will give up will give up certain attributes, certain attributes of sovereignty to a common pool. It will leads to it will leads to greater cooperation. It will leads to greater cooperation. For example, European countries has given up visa issuance power with respect to other European Union members. Now this power is exercised by European Council. This power is exercised by European Council which leads to greater cooperation. Which leads to greater cooperation. Leads to greater cooperation. Fine, now give a heading, examples of, examples of regional organizations, examples of regional organizations. First, write about SARK. Write about S double A R C, not SARK, okay, SARK. Write. South Asian Association for regional cooperation. SARK was established, was established on eighth of December, was established on eighth of December nineteen eighty-five. Eighth of December nineteen eighty-five through SARK Charter, through SARK Charter in Dhaka. In Dhaka. Next point, SARK comprise of eight members. SARK comprise of eight members. Afghanistan, Bangladesh, Bhutan, India, Maldives, Nepal, Pakistan and Sri Lanka. The secretary of SARK is at Kathmandu. Is at Kathmandu. Established on seventeenth January nineteen eighty-seven. Established on seventeenth January nineteen eighty-seven. Now write in the next line. The major objective of SARK, major objective of SARK is to promote, is to promote number one, welfare of the people. Welfare of the people of South Asia. Welfare of the people of South Asia, number two. Accelerate economic growth. Accelerate economic growth. Number three, promote, promote and strengthen, promote and strengthen collective self-reliance. Collective self-reliance. And create mutual trust. Create mutual trust. Next, next point in that, strengthening cooperation. Strengthening cooperation with other developing countries. Other developing countries and regional organizations with similar aim, with similar aim and purpose. With similar aim and purpose. Now write. Achievements of SARK. Achievements of SARK. Number one, SAFTA, S A F T A, SAFTA. SARK introduced SARK introduced South Asian Free Trade Agreement, South Asian Free Trade Agreement to boost trade between trade between member states. trade between member states in year nineteen ninety-five, in year nineteen ninety-five. However, the contract was signed, however, the contract was signed during twelfth summit, twelfth summit, which was held in Islamabad in two thousand five. And on first January two thousand six. And on first January two thousand six, it was officially launched. But there was, there was conflicting situation with respect to list of list of negative items, list of negative items and tariff on positive list, tariff on positive list. And ultimately, in two thousand sixteen, SAFTA become dysfunctional, SAFTA become dysfunctional like SARC, like SARC. Next achievement, so was it achievement, SAFTA was achievement or not? Was it achievement, it was an achievement to at least negotiate. But because of what, rivalry between whom, India and Pakistan. So because of rivalry between India and Pakistan, that was not possible. Sometimes what happened, it is not just Pakistan, even India also. Fine, you know, we are not going to agree on this. Fine, we are not going to agree on this, why, because Pakistan is getting angry on this, that's why we will not agree. Similarly, same problem with whom, Pakistan. The classic example is the case of MFL, most favored nation. Most favored nation status, so whenever you are going to in the part of trade and commerce, like in WTO, WTO is international organization. Fine, so WTO said that, every member country have to go for what, equal treatment to other country. Apart from equal treatment, how to ensure equal treatment, most favored nation. So most favored nation status must be given to what, all other countries. Every country, so if I am a member, India is a member of what, India is a member of WTO. Then India have to extend most favored nation status to every country, why? Because for me, there is everyone is a favorite, means no one is a favorite. So in order to assert no one is a favorite, then everyone have to be what, favorite, best friend forever. Fine, so there is no best friend, everyone is what, best friend. So similarly, MFL status have to be given to every member, fine. So India have given the most favored nation status to Pakistan. But Pakistan was not able to give because of the domestic compulsion. People are not able to understand in Pakistan that why Pakistan government is calling India as a most favored nation. And because of that, they are not able to give that. Even India taken back after Uri attack, India also have withdrawn what, most favored nation status. But in general, most favored nation status should be given to every member, fine. And when we go for free trade, FTA, Free Trade Agreement. So what Free Trade Agreement means actually, actually suppose that two countries are there who want to go for what, Free Trade Agreement. That means they are going to lower the import duties and other taxes on goods which are coming from one country to other country. So that is why it is called what, Free Trade Agreement. Free Trade Agreement doesn't mean that, all the goods which are coming from other country, it is going to be free. No, Free Trade Agreements means that the goods which are coming from other country are going to attract lower tariff and taxes in the importing country. So exporting country is going to have lower taxes and tariffs in the importing country. This is the main feature of what, Free Trade Agreement. Fine, now sometimes what happen, so you have to give a list. This country is also going to give a list, so both countries are going to exchange a list, list of what? On those goods which are agreed to decrease what, tariff and taxes. And the goods on which we are not agreed to decrease what, taxes and tariffs. So on those goods on which we are not agreed, they are not called as what, negative list. So if we have given the negative list, if we have given the negative list, what it means that? It means that apart from these goods, listen carefully, okay? If we have given the negative list, what it means that? It means that except these goods, on every good, we have what? Low tariff, low tariff and taxes, except these. Fine, if we are giving a positive list, what it means that, it means that only on those goods, we are going to do what? Decrease the taxes and tariffs, which one is better? Which one is showing that there is a good cooperation between two country? One FTA is happening on negative list, one FTA is happening on the positive list. Which one is showing that greater cooperation between these two country? Negative list or positive list? Sometimes negative is positive. Okay, so here negative list is showing that what, except these goods, all other goods will come under what? FTA, whereas the positive list means what, only on these goods. So this is why where the positive list is there, we call it as a preferential trade agreement, PTA. Means what, only these goods are going to be under what, under the lower tariff. So it is called what, PTA, Preferential Trade Agreement. Whereas if you are going to have what, negative list, it is called what, FTA. So SARC have decided that we are going to lower the tariff. And we are going to call this what, SAFTA. So SAFTA was launched, launching of SAFTA means what? Launching of SAFTA means that all the member countries are going to negotiate and discuss to decrease taxes and duties on certain goods. But there is always conflict. Myanmar, Bangladesh have a conflict, India and Sri Lanka have conflict, India and Pakistan have only conflict. Fine, so because of this conflictual situation, we are never able to achieve what we have started. And finally in two thousand sixteen, when India have refused, Bangladesh, Nepal also refused. Shekhasina was the Prime Minister at that point of time, so she is always aligned with whom, India. Now see, she is out, now what is happening? Pakistan Army is going to train Bangladesh Army from next year onwards. From next year onwards, they are going to train what, they are going to train Bangladesh Army. It is going to like that Indian Army people are going to train Chinese soldiers and Chinese soldiers are going to train what, Indian soldiers. So this is happening, so sometimes some governments are also going to play what, important role and another aspect regarding SARC. In September, Mr. Yunus, fine, who is a what, caretaker, Prime Minister. Fine, what he said that, he has given an interview to whom, PTI. PTI stand for Press Trust of India. And in that interview, he has mentioned that I am looking forward, for what, I am looking forward for SARC two point zero. New SARC, fine, and under that, we will try to have greater cooperation, greater cooperation. And for that purpose, I will try to meet Mr. Modi in September. I am telling you the event of the September, he has given this interview in September two thousand twenty-four. So he said that I am looking forward to re-initiate what, SARC initiative. And for that purpose, I will talk to whom, Mr. Modi. What it means that, he know that without Mr. Modi or without India, it is not possible to have what, SARC. Then he said that I will try to talk Mr. Modi. And then he also added that all of countries are going to attend UN General Assembly Summit. And Mr. Modi is also about to attend that summit and I will try to meet him there. And after meeting, I will also try to have a photo shoot. Not this one, fine, photo shoot of all the SARC countries head. So that SARC can be reignited. And Modi ji was smiling, ki beta, not possible, not possible. Now India have took what, India have took SARC as a what, prestige issue. Fine, because India feels that Pakistan is using the platform of SARC to politicize and internationalize those bilateral issues. Those bilateral issues, so these bilateral issues should not be what, should not be at that platform. Mr. S. Jashankar went to Pakistan for which summit? SCU summit, but it was clear-cut message to Pakistan. If you are going to rake any issue of Jammu and Kashmir, immediately we will leave. Plane is ready, bus is ready, you are going to make an noise, you will leave immediately. We will leave immediately, it will not take and see, the entire SCU summit was put aside. Focus on what, is Mr. S. Jashankar is going to visit Islamabad? Pura ka pura summit side me chala gaya, entire summit was in the side, focus on what, S. Jashankar. Sydney Morning Herald, fine, China's people daily, Indian media, Pakistani media, kisiko ko farki nahi padh raha hai, nobody is about what? SCU, what is going to happen, everybody is what, India and Pakistan. And this is why many international organizations, they do not want to have India and Pakistan. They do not want to have India and Pakistan, why, because they know that, if both will come, both will create an issue. Both will create an issue, BRICS is there, new members added. Now Pakistan is pushing China, bhaiya, bhaiya, please, amko bhi, take it. And China know that, if I will bring the Pakistan, it will annoy whom? India and unnecessary the focus of BRICS is going to be what, diverted. We have already seen it where, SCU. So China has politely said that, see, this is a organization of emerging economies, not beggars. Fine, so it is not possible for us to add you and it should be added. New member can be added only when the founding members are going to have what, consent. Without the consent of all members, it is not going to be there and humiliation happens. Argentina was granted, but Argentina what did, step back. Argentina was granted the membership of BRICS, but Argentina stepped back. So it's a kind of humiliation, now the BRICS countries are what, until unless you are going to bow down, we are not going to give you. So in the high optimism, they have given to whom, Argentina also. Actually, they want to create a regional balance, why, Argentina and Brazil are two bigger countries at where? South America, so they want to create a balance. So that South America countries should not feel that, there is a discrimination. But that bad fired, so even a good organizations like BRICS are having politics. Fine, so SARC is having what, SARC is going to have such issues. So they have initiated what, SAFTA, but never went out. They have created another initiative, I will explain, then I will dictate, they have initiative of South Asian identity. Rather than calling at what, Indians, Pakistanis or Sri Lankan have identity of what, of South Asia. And see, in India, it's not happened, the South Asian identity never happens. But when these people from India, Pakistan, Bangladesh, they will go to US and they work there, they are playing cricket together. Wicket keeper is from Bangladeshi origin, bowler is of Indian origin, batsman is of Pakistani origin and they are playing against whom, US people. So when you have a regional identity, when you are out of the conflict zone. So when Indians, Pakistanis, Sri Lankans, Bangladeshis, they are out of this zone, they are in other country, then they are feeling the identity of what? Why, because their identity is targeted, Indians are not targeted, Pakistanis are not targeted, who are targeted? Asians are targeted, South Asians are targeted, you are here to take our job. So then this identity what emerged, so the identity emerged because of two reasons. Because of the greater cooperation or because of what, greater conflict. European identity emerged, European identity emerged against what, a common interest, common interest. Whereas the South Asian identity is not able to emerge because of what, cooperation. It emerged only in the case of what, it emerged only in the case of when we have a common threat. So Asian identity is under threat in any region, then they feel that what, we are Asians, we are South Asians. We have, we have same kind of cultural aspects and all these things. But when they feel that this is not going to work, then it is going to weak. So identity, identity may be strong, identity may be weak. So if you ask any person, where you are from? People ask me also, where are you from, I said India. A person asked me in the train, where are you from, I said I am from India. Haha, vo to pata hai, humne ka feh, then why you are asking? No, basically you are from where, basically I am also from India. Actually, in that journey, I have used the extent of particular region. I am good in that, so he thought that I am also belonging to that region. Fine, so that regional identity is more important. Have you seen that, it always happen, it's with me happening, it is going to happen with you also. If you will go outside and you will meet Telugu people, immediately language will be changed to what, Telugu. Similarly, if I am going to meet a person who is knowing the Hindi very well, I am immediately going to switch what, Hindi. It is looking like more connecting, fine, more connecting. So this is why minorities have bigger stronger identity. Minorities in the region. This is a majority region and minority region is always going to have what, stronger identity. Why, because they know that this identity can work as a common force to deter whom, majority. So certain people see the identity as a deterring force. Certain people see the identity as what, deterring force. Whereas Europeans sees identity, European identity as a what? As a force to assert our rights and benefits. So identity in the Asian identities are negatively created, whereas European identity is created on what, positive basis. So how to change this negative identity into positive identity, the basic of what, basic of regionalism. If we are going to focus on certain aspects, what aspects? Focus first on which areas, where can cooperation happen? Then involve other areas. So when you involve all these areas, then you will create what, interdependence. And this interdependence will lead to what, greater cooperation in other areas. So identify those areas where can be greater cooperation. In other words, in the case of India and Pakistan, it is said that track to diplomacy, it means what? Rather than trying to solve Kashmir issue first, try to focus on economic cooperation, cultural exchanges, sending a team to Pakistan. sending the team to Pakistan to play what? Champions Trophy. And allowing Pakistani team to play here. So this cultural exchanges, economic exchanges will create what? More interdependence. And this more interdependence is going to create what? Going to create more cooperation in those areas where we have what? Conflictual interest. Fine, but the problem is what? If you will see why it is not possible in the SARC? Why? The reason is if you will see the SARC, the economic status of India and the economic status of other countries. Bangladesh need money, Sri Lanka need money, Nepal need money. Pakistan to always. Fine, whereas India is having different economic status. So India is not able to better economically integrate with whom? These countries. And this is why it is also a reason why we cannot have close a better SARC. Because of what? Economic disparity in the region. Greater economic disparity. The level of Indian economy and the level of other regional economy. India can better integrate with China. Indian economy can better integrate with whom? China. Agree or not? Even if you disagree, I have data. Who is the biggest trading partner of India? China. Where India go for maximum export? China. So despite this conflict, India's trade with China is more than what? Hundred billion dollar even ten years back, which may reach to what? Two hundred billion in coming two, three years. And this is happening when? When we have a greater hostility. Do not want to see each other. Skipping each other. Now again what happens? We have initiated now on every month, not every month, every fifteen to twenty days, Indian officials are meeting to whom? Chinese officials, Chinese officials are meeting at what? Indian officials. So India and China have a better prospect to solve their issues in comparison to whom? India and Pakistan. Why? Because they have economic, not complete parity, but to certain extent, they can cooperate on economic basis, create a cultural exchanges, then may lead to what? Political issues. But in the case of India and Pakistan, Pakistan until unless is not going to focus on economic development. It is very difficult to go for what? Greater cooperation between whom? SARC countries. Now, India can try in this way. India can focus on what? More cooperation for what purpose? Economic cooperation purpose. And this is why India have created another organization. What organization? BIMSTICK. What is the name of BIMSTICK? Technical and Economic Cooperation. See the name of SARC and see the name of BIMSTICK. So BIMSTICK by its name itself clearly shows that that what are the focus area? Trade and technical cooperation. Rather than going for what? Other cooperation like we have what? SARC. No need to create a common identity. Focus on what? Focus on better to integrate those areas where we can easily collide. I told you now that regional organization have three aspects basically. Political, economic and strategic. So focus on what aspect? Economic aspect. So once you focus on economic aspect, then later on we can go for what? Political and strategic. So if the question will come on SARC, how to answer? How to answer? So first, you have to give the status of SARC. Introduction to the SARC. How this SARC was established? What was the purpose to establish the SARC? Fine, then what happens wrong? What wrong happened? Fine, regional conflicts. Then how to suggest way forward? If the question will be asked, that how we can realize SARC 2.0, how you will answer? How we can realize SARC 2.0, how you will realize? How you will answer this question? So first, we have to introduce what? SARC, what is SARC? We have to introduce what is SARC? Then write the present status of SARC. The SARC become dysfunctional from 2016. So this you have written in what? Introduction. Fine, this you have written in the introduction. Then in the body, you can mention recent statement of whom? Muhammad Yunus of Bangladesh to revive what? SARC. But after mentioning that statement, you have to mention that what leads to downfall of the SARC? So you have mentioned the reasons for the downfall of the SARC. Now you can provide that there are certain ways, there are certain ways to re-emerge SARC. And for that, what you have to write? Regional cooperation focusing on what aspects? Economic aspects. Try to focus on these areas, economic aspects plus socio-cultural cooperation. So focusing on these areas and it should be based on charter. So there is need to revise the charter of what? Charter of SARC. And here, you should mention only these agendas. No, I have told you now that there are certain objectives of SARC. Asian identity, cultural cooperation. No, only mention what? Economic cooperation and socio-cultural cooperation, no other cooperation. Only these areas need to be focused initially. And if we are able to achieve these goals, then we can move forward for other goals. So you have to mention the charter. Only on this matter we are going to talk. No other matters will be there. Fine, and by then, if India and Pakistan is going to both there. If India is going to rake the issue, then other members silence whom? India. But if Pakistan is going to raise the issue, all the members can silence whom? Pakistan. That here we are discussed to what? Economic issues only. No other issues. So such kind of initiative will lead to what? Greater cooperation at economic and socio-cultural level. But economic disparity in the South Asian region is one of the reason that where this economic cooperation among them gets what? Weak. So this is why we have to completely focus on what? Economic aspect. Greater economic integration of all these countries. And there should know, there will, there should not be any, there should not be, we are focusing on what? Economic aspect and there should not be any sunset clause. Do you understand what is sunset clause? So when we have a condition, that we will work only under this condition. Once this condition will be over, we will give it up. Or there is a timeframe, that we have an agreement for this phase. Fine, so for example, Indo-Russia Friendship and Peace Treaty was signed for twenty years. Means that twenty years is what? Sunset clause. After twenty years, it is automatically going to be what? Lapse until unless it is what? Re-negotiated. Fine, similarly what? India, Nepal Friendship and Peace Treaty. That was not having any sunset clause. It was signed between India and whom? Nepal. Without any sunset clause. India and Bhutan Friendship and Peace Treaty, without any sunset clause. Fine, so you have to go for economic cooperation by mentioning there should not be any sunset clause. Means once you have given the MFN kind of the status, you cannot withdraw that MFN status without anything. Means for example, if SAFTA. So under SAFTA, member countries have given what? MFN status. So there should not be any escape clause or sunset clause. Escape clause means what? In certain conditions, we can withdraw this escape clause. Sunset clause, after this, it is going to be automatically what? Overlaps. So we have to go for SAFTA MFN status and without what? Escape clause and sunset clause. Then it will force all members countries to give what? MFN. And continue that MFN without any if and but. Then it will lead to what? Greater cooperation. So in nutshell, we can say that that there is a need for what? Rule-based. Rules-based. So when we have a rule-based negotiations, it works better than what? Hope-based negotiations. So one is rule-based and another is what? Hope-based. We hope to do that. We hope to achieve that. And especially what? Especially without, I have mentioned already, two clauses. One is escape and another is what? Sunset. That may lead to what? Greater cooperation. Fine, so they went for South Asian identity, didn't work. They also went for what? South Asian university. So in Delhi, Ignu, Indira Gandhi Open University is there and their office is at Madanggadi. Their office is at Madanggadi. And in the same region, India have established South Asian university. So idea was that that all the South Asian countries, means SARC countries, they can come at where? They can come to that place and they can go for what? Study of graduation, post-graduation and other courses, research and all. So South Asian university was established. But again, it is what? Disfunctional. Many of the like Bangladesh, Sri Lanka and other members are coming, but no Pakistanis are coming. Fine, so it is not functioning. So to make SARC useful, we need cooperation between whom? India and Pakistan. So it should not be a precondition. Both of the countries have to understand that if they want to go for greater good, then they need to focus on what? Then they need to focus on the region. But the problem is with India. What is the problem with the India? What is the precondition for success of SARC? What is the precondition? Focus on which area? Focus on which area? Economic. The focus on economic can lead to the success of what? SARC. And for economic cooperation, India needs to cooperate with other countries. But India do not find any incentive. India do not find any incentive. Like see, with China, we have a conflict. But India also know that that having greater economic integration with China will lead to our economic prosperity. And China also understand that. But if you are going to have a greater cooperation with Nepal, maximum to maximum what? Hydro power. Do Nepal have a capacity to match India's GDP? Do Nepal have a capacity to provide such kind of economic benefit to India? Then obviously, India will focus on ASEAN or SARC? ASEAN, not SARC. So these are the counter reasons which may lead to what? Not rise of SARC. So if the question is going to be asked, so your conclusion will be optimistic or pessimistic? Your answer will be optimistic or what? Pessimistic. Your answer should be optimistic but with if and buts. Fine, so write a question. Write a question. Regional cooperation. Regional cooperation is regional cooperation is a bedrock for any country's aspiration. Regional cooperation is a bedrock of what I have said that? For any country, for any country to aspire aspire global power. To aspire to become a global power. To aspire to become a global power. In the light of this statement, in the light of this statement, explore the possibilities. Explore the possibilities of explore the possibilities of SARC 2.0. Explore the possibilities of SARC 2.0. Fine, so in today's discussion, we have understood the basis. Basis. But this basis will help you to understand challenges, opportunities, way forward for any regional organization. And I have given you the idea of what? I have given you the idea of SARC. Fine, how this works? In the next session, in the next session, ASEAN EU will be the main focus. And then with that, I will also explain what? NAFTA and what? NAFTA and EBITDA. Asia-Pacific Economic Cooperation. Understood? So this answer, you have to be written in how much? Two fifty words. This answer should be written in two fifty words. Fine, write it. Write it. By today evening, you will get a model answer in your WhatsApp group, whatever the group is there, you will get a model answer. But write first, then seek for what? Model answer. Fine, model answer is not first. First you have to what? First you have to write. And those students who are watching online, fine, and maybe they are not part of the institute, but they are watching online. So for them, we will upload this session and the model answer will be also uploaded in the description. Okay, thank you.